Find a way to string it out.
Yeah.
That's really important, I know. Um, you've got...
Better some chimney.
Ah, it's dirty.
All right, 6:30, folks. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's regular meeting of March 3rd, 2025. This meeting is being held both in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting, print it on the agenda, and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. And Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Leonard?
Here.
Commissioner Maza?
Here.
Commissioner Riddick?
Here.
Vice Chair Peet?
Here.
Chair Hill?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right. Who would like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Any volunteers? Don Schmitz?
Yes, sir. Let's get the cowboy boots on. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as recommended with item 4A continued to March 17th.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. And may I have a report on the posting of the agenda, then?
The agenda for the meeting was properly posted on February 21st, 2025. The amended agenda was properly posted on February 28th, 2025.
Thank you. There being no ceremonial presentations, we'd be moving to the written and oral communications from the public. How many speakers do we have? I'd like to make, have a couple of words before this, just, basically, I'd just like to apologize about our meeting last week. I should have made it clear from the outset that we had a more narrow purpose in front of us than a lot of us would have wanted. And I think the frustration felt by a lot of people underscored what some of us, including myself, have already been advocating for, that the process be more inclusive, and that there be some kind of workshops, and City Council has gotten that message. I'm not sure how far they're taking it, but they understand that people need to have more voice and more participation. So, I don't know, I just felt it was ironic for me personally to be accused of trying to shut down public comment when I've been one of the most vocal advocates for having that more inclusive process. I could talk more about it if anybody would like to, I'd be happy to listen and talk whenever. So, public comments. We have Christopher Ryan Sorensen, three minutes, followed by Norm Haney and Deana Moore. Christopher, come on up.
Hello, Council. Christopher Sorensen. Just, I just wanted to repeat something that I had mentioned last week to the City Council regarding the architects. You know, a lot of design professionals and architects have kind of formed this group, and we've kind of looked at a lot of different things that we could maybe do better in the city. One of the things, obviously, with all the hundreds of homes in Big Rock and on the beach there, obviously, looking at that, systematically approaching that from a design point of view, and what I want to recommend is that we can look at possibly streamlining some of the reports that are gathered and some of the engineering, you know, the wave up brush reports, the geologic reports, surveys, and then, of course, all the septic systems that have to be put back, assuming that some are going to be okay, but most of them are probably going to have to be replaced. You know, when you're looking at, you know, 300 to 400 to 500, including Big Rock, new septic systems potentially, you know, your tens of millions, up to $50 million, and so I would like to propose the idea of doing a sewer system. I know that it's been, there's been a lot of political pushback. It's been proposed for decades, but we have kind of a unique situation and kind of a once-in-a-lifetime to basically not be putting back septic systems in those areas. So for Big Rock, putting all the water into the groundwater is the ancient landslide, continuing to put in water into the ground, and continue to exacerbate the problem with the landslide of Big Rock. And then, of course, on PCH, all those septic systems, even as good as the tertiary systems are, you know, it's right up against the ocean, polluting the Santa Monica Bay. So, I know, I've done some research with companies that put in sewer systems, like a vacuum sewer system that could actually happen over that three-to-five-mile stretch, and I do think it's feasible. They can put these things in about six to 12 months for a far less cost than everyone individually is adding, is, it was going to cost all the individuals to add those. And, and the same thing is looking at systematically, you know, having Army Corps of Engineer doing one large survey for the entire area. Everyone has to pay $5,000 to $10,000 for a survey along that beach, you know, $7,500 to $15,000 per wave up brush report, et cetera, et cetera. And I've reached out to Public Works here in Malibu, Rob DeVoe, Craig, Christine, and Lauren Doyle, and so I just wanted to mention that to you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hopefully, Council is listening. Norm?
Good evening, Honorable Planning Commissioners. For the longest time, the County of Los Angeles, both the Water Department, Public Works Department, Fire Department, has had a bit of a conspiracy. They have gotten together and basically extracted a great deal of money out of private citizens to create a situation where the private citizen has to pay for the infrastructure that they have failed to keep up. You all know about the check valve and the hotel. What you don't know is 1982, I had to jack under PCH and make a connection, a 10-inch water main, to the 30-inch water main on the south side of PCH. Then I had to extend that 10-inch water main on the north side of PCH all the way to McDonald's. That's why I don't have any trouble with water with regard to the potential hotel. It's because I've already put in the water main. Is that enough? Oh, no, that's not enough. That was too long ago. Now they want me to pay for $600,000 worth of a check valve. The point I'm trying to make here is that the county should take care of its own infrastructure with the standard fees they charge everybody. And here's the problem. We all know that the water tanks are empty when you have a wildfire, and the only money, the only water that's normally available is that water that's in the trucks, which can only handle one or two homes at a time, and the water that is stored privately on each person's tank, property. Basically, 20,000 gallons, whether it's in a swimming pool or whether it's in a tank. If a person's willing to do that, the city should be willing to issue a building permit for a house, because not only will that water tank protect the house, his house, but it'll protect the neighbor's house as well, on both sides. The, the Fire Department will hook up to that and put out the fire. Now, if your neighbor's house is no longer on fire, there's a very good chance your house is not going to be on fire. So it helps everyone. But as long as the city expect, the county expects you to build their infrastructure for them, they will not approve a 20,000-gallon water tank, private water supply for your property. I want you to think about this and see if there's something we can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norm. And next, we have Deana Moore.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, for opening with that apology. Still, I wanted to briefly address what some witnessed here during the last Planning Commission meeting, while others watched video of it. I'm talking about how Heather was treated. She lost her Malibu home in Woolsey and went through hell trying to rebuild, so they bought a house in Palisades, which they also lost in the Palay fire. I don't know about you, but I don't know anyone else who lost two homes, one in Woolsey and one in Palisades. Heather called in and wasn't able to speak, so she drove down. Her fiance let us know she was on her way and only asked that you let her speak. When she arrived, she was visibly upset and got more upset when you wouldn't let her speak. The sheriff got involved, as did my husband, Mike and I. We stood up next to her, just wanting to show our support. I didn't know Heather before that night, and I just wanted to hear her story. Standing up here next to her, I felt how upset she was and how all she wanted was to speak, but she was shut down immediately. I've heard people talking about the trauma in this town, that we all need healing. Healing is something I'm very familiar with. I've been a physical therapist for 30 years. For 20 of those years, I've often worked with newborns and their families overcoming traumatic births. We all look to leadership to help guide us toward healing. However, that healing can only happen when there is trust in the leadership. If there was any trust in the leadership of Malibu before that Planning Commission meeting, it was seriously shaken by that incident. Heather is a new mother with a two-and-a-half and a one-year-old. She is a mama bear. Those of you who have children may remember that precious phase of your life when all you have are your littles. They are dependent on you for everything. You are their world, and they are yours. Many people might jump to dismiss her as crazy. However, have you ever messed with a mama bear and her cubs? It is our nature to ferociously protect our young families, and that's all she was doing. So please, help us trust you by just having some compassion to listen to the residents and victims as we all heal from these devastating fires. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Deana. We'll have, I'll have a comment on that, I think, but are we, are any Zoom speakers?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, so that brings it back up to the table. Do we have any, anybody dying to speak first?
I just want to get direction from Council. As I understand it, we are not supposed to talk about things that are on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, but the Commissioner is allowed to make very brief remarks in response, and when I say brief, it's a real brief, not a political brief.
Maybe I should address the last commenter, being the chair. Yeah. Skylar?
All right, so I was just going to talk about a couple of things that I did that are unrelated to the agenda in the recent time since our last meeting, and I wanted to start that off by saying that Heather is a mama bear, and don't mess with a mama bear, because I have one at home, and I can't mess with her. So, knowing her for a long time was very hard, I think, for anyone in this room to watch that, but there is a process that has to be followed, and that process doesn't always work the way that we want it to, and that was a very sad thing to witness. I think that all of us probably feel that way.
Yeah.
I appreciate our architects and design professionals in our community getting together to help everybody. I think that that's a step in the right direction for all of us. Sewer used to be a lethal word in Malibu, and we'll see where that conversation goes. Norm, I think you bring up some valid points about our water system, and the hope in recovering from this situation is such that our city gets built back better than ever. I think that that's kind of the goal of everybody, and we have to do that by trusting not only the science behind wildfire, but the science behind septic systems, and the science behind our water district, and how it functions, and the safety of the highway. I also had just a comment for those of you that live up in Big Rock. A lot of people have been, been reaching out with other things regarding that, and I know that everybody in our staff and our city is working around the clock to work with our state partners and others to get this done, and it doesn't happen overnight. So I appreciate everybody's patience with them, and the frustration and the trauma that was spoken about early this evening is real. It's real for all of us, too. I also just had, I've had some real good conversations with our state representative and people in his office, and over the weekend, had some really good conversation with Brad Sherman's representative. So Brad Sherman represents our congressional district currently, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right, I just wanted to say also that I was not happy with the way the last meeting went down, and I offer my sincere apologies to anyone that was cut off. So many people came here to speak. They ended up turning in their cards. We cut time. That was my first time going through a situation where we were really, really forced to just stick to the topic on hand and not take it. We all had lots of comments that we wanted to express and all worked on ideas in regards to trying to help the process, and we didn't get a chance to voice those either, and it's definitely a lesson learned, and I hope to have learned from that lesson. I have my, as I said, I offer my apologies to everyone.
I think part of it, too, is that if it's a small meeting like it is tonight, we would have the flexibility to say, yeah, come on and speak, but we had so many people in the room, and we already had people out there kind of railing and saying, wait, wait, I, there's more I need to say, more. And so if we had opened the door a crack and let her speak, there would have been a flood of other people saying, wait a minute, I need my time now, and, you know, and it's so, it was kind of an all-or-nothing situation, and maybe I didn't handle it as well as I could have, but I, I don't, in retrospect, the substance of it, I don't, I don't feel like we had really had a choice.
I just think is, I, I want to say, Greg, I appreciate, I think that the way that you handled that was a very difficult situation, and there's no, there's no feeling that we can express for how somebody feels when they lose everything, and then they lose everything again, and then they have small little kids at home, and that is something that, it literally makes the hair stand up on my back. So, I just want to let Heather know, if she's out there, that I love you, Heather, and I, I hope that you're taking care of those little kids, and we're going to do our best to get you back, and then know that the people in the Palisades are, we're going to do the same thing.
Thank you, Skylar. John?
Yeah, I just want to say that we have to depend on staff once a meeting gets going, and we were told by staff 10 hours of hearings, of, of speaking, and we had one night to solve an intractable problem, as far as I'm concerned. Now it's the, now it's the City Council's problem. We made our recommendations as much as we could. We were here until basically midnight. There were nine people here in the midnight, so keep that in mind. So we did the best we could, and the real important thing is tomorrow at 3 o'clock, if you are at all involved in the fire or have any, any, any ancillary needs to be involved, that's where the rubber hits the road, tomorrow at 3 o'clock. If it doesn't get done and moved along then, it's a problem. So I hope everybody understands that. We, we have nothing more to do as a Planning Commission until the City Council's all done with it, and so move on to where the, where the rubber hits the road. Thanks.
Elizabeth?
So, I just, I want to say thanks for coming down, and thanks for sharing, and everything that you said is really important, so I want to acknowledge that. And then I need to continue my education process here, so, you know, I, I am not for or against sewers. I hear the idea, it could be a good one. I don't know how this works exactly, so I just need some direction. Can I say, I personally think it would be beneficial to agendize or to find out at some point, maybe not, it's not right this second, but I'd like to better understand what that would take, whether it's feasible. Go ahead.
I think that might be more a matter for council, but, oh, go ahead.
It is outside the purview of the Planning Commission. That would be a city council issue, so it would be appropriate to provide correspondence to the city council at malibucity.org with that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then also, I would like just some information in terms of the water tanks. I hear what Norm is saying, and I don't know, if somebody was to do a rebuild, and they were going to have a water tank on their property, is that something that we, how do we, what's the approval process? Is that a CDP process? It is administrative? What's the path?
I think we're asking Tyler to step up, or, Marianne, do you?
We'll answer this quickly, because it is part of the LCP.
Okay, great. So could you just educate me?
So as of right now, in the current code, if you were to do a rebuild, let's say for Woolsey Fire, and you wanted to add a water tank, that would be new development outside of what is allowed under your rebuild, and so it would be a CDP, as of current.
Okay.
But the problem is, it's deeper than the city, I think is what Norm is alluding to. There's, there's stuff that the county is in control of, and I think that's all I will say.
Okay, so at a later point, I'd like to better understand the path, because I think it's important for the safety of our community. I think it would be the right thing to do, and to understand how to get there, you know, for us, it would be really important. So I want to acknowledge that. And otherwise, I just want to say, I just think it's incredible, you know, the ideas that come forth, and I'm listening, so, thanks.
So I have several things to comment on. First, on the sewer thing, I think the big question is, and I'm ecumenical, I don't know, but who pays? Is that a special assessment district? I don't know. You need to think about that. On the water tanks, in Australia, in a lot of neighborhoods, in this sort of suburban boundary, wildland boundary, like we have a lot of here, tanks are required when you build. You have to have a tank on your property. So it's strange that that's so difficult even here. Maybe it should be an option, but not quite so hard. Now, you know, in the grand scheme of all, everything that's happening, it might be time for the city to look at a few sort of housekeeping things that we haven't really noticed, but somebody should be looking at. A lot of people are spending long days at sites up in the hills now, and they have their contractors and workers all up there. Where are they going to the bathroom? Maybe the city should be putting some honeywagons down at the bottom of each of the canyons for a certain period, because otherwise, like, you know, what, there's a lot of people crawling over, all over the mountains right now, and where are they going? Meanwhile, driving in here via Malibu Canyon, you pass tens of thousands of plastic sandbags that the county presumably has arrayed against the roadway to, for erosion control. Plastic sandbags are illegal in the city of Malibu. These should be, you know, they're going to degrade, and those little bits of it are going to get into the ocean, and microplastics, et cetera. Somebody should be, Code Enforcement Public Works should be looking at that and saying, guys, can we get proper burlap sandbags here? Finally, I keep forgetting to ask about this, this is for Tyler, or maybe Director Tom Murray, why has the lot at the northeast corner of Malibu Canyon in PCH been allowed to be so entirely graded? The whole lot is designated ESHA. Grading ESHA is illegal, and just because a fire came through there, it doesn't take it out of ESHA status. Fire is part of the normal ecology. So I'm just wondering, who would have issued a permit? Was there a permit? That whole lot was just kind of taken down to dirt. Under what authority? You sound, you look like you know.
No, it just sounds like these are all questions for the city council, not in front of us.
Well, it's a permit question, so it's in the air now. Maybe somebody will answer it at the next council meeting. Any other comments? No? Okay. With that, we'll close the commissioner comments and move on.
Chair Hill? If I may, just very quickly, the next city council meeting is also a special meeting with a fairly narrowly focused agenda, so I would encourage members of the public to read that report. And it will be a town hall workshop format, but with, again, a relatively tight focus on the codes, because if we don't get the paths to being able to issue permits to build, we can't move people forward. So if you take, take time to see what is available for discussion, that would be very helpful.
Thank you for that, for that clarification. Yeah, the meeting is tomorrow at 3 o'clock, right?
3 o'clock, and the, the agenda is posted with all the material to be, to be looked at, and underlined and color-coded, et cetera, et cetera. I've posted it on Real Malibu and a couple other sites. But it's very easily accessible, and people should read it before they go to the meeting.
Is a meeting here, in this room?
The meeting will be in council chambers, beginning at 3:00 PM. It will also be able to be attended by Zoom, but to participate effectively in a workshop format, I believe it would be, you'd be advised to be present here for that portion of the meeting.
This is the inclusiveness we're talking about, working to make happen. So hopefully it will go well. Drew, you had a, oh, okay, yes, Skylar.
I was asked to speak next week at the composer's breakfast at Dreamland, which is at 9:00 AM on Monday. So if anybody wants to come to that, and you're in Malibu, please come to Dreamland, Dreamland, next Monday at 9:00 AM.
What's your subject?
Subject matter will be Malibu.
All right, thank you. So I think we're on to the consent calendar.
Okay, I move the consent calendar as presented.
I will second that, and I'm.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Staff comments? Guys, it seemed like such a small agenda that, go ahead.
We don't have anything this time. Thank you.
Is there any, I know, because we're in disaster mode still, is there any way, even though you're repeating yourselves, if you guys can just kind of keep getting information out at all, when you do have these opportunities going forward, really be great.
Sure.
Rebecca?
Sure. There is, on malabubrebills.org, there is a newsletter that's getting posted. So we're going to start to populate our projects as they come forward. We've got about, what, seven applications now for rebills at this particular point.
Oh, that's great. Good.
That's really good news.
Yeah.
And one approved, so, yeah. We also open our Rebuilds Center on Monday, so please make an appointment or come by. Dedicated staff will be there five days a week. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we look forward to having Los Angeles County Fire participate. They're also going to be at the One Stop Shop in Calabasas for the county. So they will be available for in-person, either here with us, Malibu, or at One Stop. So that's great news. And that's the spot where the tanks and other components of water support will be evaluated. That information comes through the state fire marshal. So far outside of our ability to bring an issue to the council to change something. So those are the standards, and that's the way they're set.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I just did want to mention, I realized at our last meeting, we announced a tentative date for the Design Professionals Meeting because of council's decision to hold workshop format to begin their conversation about the zoning text amendment and the local coastal program amendment. That Design Professional Meeting has been pushed to March 12th, and it is on the Fire Rebuild Newsletter, and that is your best spot to look for that information. It will be held in City Hall Council Chambers. Yes.
Thank you. What's the meeting tomorrow?
Tomorrow is the City Council Special Meeting. The agenda is published online at malibucity.org/AgendaCenter, and then look for City Council Special Meeting with tomorrow's date for the agenda and the report.
Skylar? Are you okay? All right. And I'll just, by way of news, I got my 72-hour notice from the Army Corps of Engineers, that they want to be coming up and clear. And I have some questions about how the timing of that's working out. They didn't return calls today. I don't know why that, how that works, but anyway, they are starting to clear, and I expect mine will be done shortly, so others will be, too. Okay, so are we, we're on to the consent calendar?
I'll repeat my motion. I move we approve the consent calendar as presented.
I will be recusing myself from item 3B1, but I will consent to 3B2.
Do we have consensus to adopt the calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So be it, then. So now we are on to item, we don't have 4A, that's continued to March 17th, so 4B. And who's doing that? Is that Tyler? Oh, Renika, I'm sorry. There you are. So I'll let, I'll let you read the headlines. Welcome, Renika Brooks.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the Planning Commission. This next item is the consideration of CDP number 22-009, which includes a request for a site plan review for remedial grading, located at 24515 Vantage Point Terrace. This property is located within the Malibu Country Estates Overlay District. Thank you. Depicted here is an aerial map showing the project location, the project site location, which is located northeast, excuse me, northwest of the Pepperdine Campus. The property is zone single-family, medium density, and contains two native trees, one of which is subject to the Native Tree Protection Ordinance from the LCP. The project description includes the construction of a single-family residence just under 4,000 square feet, which includes a, an attached garage. It also includes a 928-square-foot roof deck, a new driveway. The driveway is what will encroach in the protected zone from the native tree, and the project has been conditioned to ensure any damage to trees are properly mitigated. The project also includes a pool, spa, and associated equipment. And again, the remedial grading, just over 3,000 cubic yards. And again, the site plan review for the remedial grading. Depicted here is the site plan. The next couple of slides include the project elevations. Here are the north and east elevations, and these are the south and west elevations. The next couple of slides include photos of the story poles. This is taken from the road at Vantage Point Terrace, just showing the span of the proposed residence. And as depicted in your staff report and in the attached public correspondence, there was concern from the neighbor immediately north of the project site, who had some concerns about the massing of the structure and the original design of the rooftop deck. This slide shows the proximity of the proposed residence to the neighboring property immediately north of the project site. Depicted here is the original roof plan. And although the code doesn't have any specific design criteria for roof decks, there is a lot of discussion in the general plan and in the municipal code that encourages private protection, privacy, the protection of privacy for private property owners. So again, although there aren't any hard-fast standards for roof decks and the size, the, bless you, the applicant has modified the roof deck to address, to address the neighbor's concerns. Again, depicted here is the original roof plan, and depicted here is the modified roof plan. Again, if you see the red dashed portion of the original roof deck has been removed. So the shaded maroon color is the new proposed roof deck with planters propose along the north and south portions of the roof deck. And depicted here is a rendering of the, of the project. To date, there has been public correspondence on this application from the neighbor immediately north of the project. The first concern was related to, if I can get my mouse to work, the original concern was related to the proposed roof deck and concerns regarding privacy. And as discussed in your staff report and earlier in this presentation, the applicant has modified the proposed roof deck to address those privacy concerns. There was also a concern related to private, primary view protection from the neighboring property. And as stated in your staff report, the Malibu Country Estates Overlay District includes development standards for height. Specifically, certain lots within that overlay do not require a site plan review for development above 18 feet in height. However, this project is limited to 18 feet in height, so the primary view protection does not apply. There are specific standards related to landscaping, and how those need to be modified to address private primary views. There was also a concern related to the ESHA determination. And as mentioned, as discussed in your staff report, there is, oh, I think I skipped one. There we go. There are mapped wetlands in ESHA on the ESHA map and, and the city's GIS system. The, the stream mapped north of the site is located through the Pepperdine Campus, through an existing parking lot. And there is a mapped wetland delineated south of the site. And so, to address that concern, and to make sure the project was consistent with the LIP, the city biologists did conduct a site visit and determined that the parking lot is not ESHA. And the portion of the property south of this site also does not include any sensitive habitat that is home to any rare or endangered species. Accordingly, the project was determined not to be subject to the ESHA development standards under the LCP. And lastly, there was a concern regarding the project's environmental review under CEQA. Specifically, the neighbor was concerned about the need for an EIR for this, for this project. And staff's response to that concern is that, you know, the CEQA guidelines provides a host of exemptions for single-family residential development. There's also exceptions to the use of those exemptions. And this project did not pose any concerns related to the applicability of any of those exceptions. Now, if the project had concerns related to maybe like cultural resource impacts, maybe a CEQA document would be required, but that wasn't applicable here. There were other concerns related to the presence of mountain lions that were documented at the Pepperdine Campus as a reason why the project required an EIR. And again, per the city biologist's review of the project, there is no habitat that would serve mountain lions, so there wasn't any impact to any, any rare or endangered habitat, or habitat that would host any rare or endangered species. And there really, and there also wasn't any documentation that would suggest that an EIR would be required for this project. And that does conclude my presentation. Staff does recommend adoption of Planning Commission Resolution 25-02 to approve this subject CDP, and that does conclude my presentation. Thank you. And I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Renika. Do you have any quick technical clarifications we need, or can we hear from the applicant? Disclosures, thank you. Let's start with Elizabeth for disclosures.
I did speak with the applicant and got some background information. I did speak with the applicant and got some background information, and that's my disclosure.
Anything that wasn't already in the staff report?
Nope.
Okay, John?
I visited the property with Craig.
No? Well, we haven't been to this together.
No, okay, then I visited it alone, I don't remember, but prior to our last scheduled hearing, learned nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
True.
I had a phone conversation with the applicant's representative and did not really learn anything, knew about the project.
I visited last December, walked it again last week, noticed that the story poles look close to the neighbor's house, but not out of character with the density in that overlay. I noticed that in the plans, the before and after size of the proposed roof deck looked different despite the staff report stating that they were the same area. I called the applicant, she responded with the number that the, it was originally spec'd at 920 square feet, it's now spec'd at 880 square feet, so that's a reduction of about four and a half percent. I noticed that the neighbor, who'd be blocked, also has a small second-story roof deck. It looked to me to be about 10 by 12, but we see writing now saying it was 250 square feet. I looked on Google Earth and Google Earth Pro and noticed that none of the 10 closest homes have a roof deck. I don't know if it's relevant or not, whether, I have a question on it, but in terms of the neighbor's PVD, I stood up on the top of the slope, sort of as close to what their viewpoint would be, and I saw that there is a seasonal view of the ocean that's about the width of a hand held up at arm's length. That may, I'll ask that question later. And there was a seeming discrepancy between the, where the story poles are, they're roughly square to the edge of the slope, about four feet away, versus on the plans, the house looks to be at an angle about 10 feet away. And I'm wondering if there, the story plans, do they reflect an earlier design? Was there, they don't seem to conform exactly with what was on the plans.
The siding and massing of the structure has not changed. Only the roof deck changed on the, yeah, it was just the roof deck that has changed.
So I would have to say that the story poles there are approximate. Skylar?
I had a brief phone conversation with applicant's representative and didn't learn anything new.
With that then, let's, we've got the applicant team, and we have one other speaker slip, and let's bring the applicant up. Luke Tar. And you have 15 minutes, and you can reserve any amount of that for rebuttal. Let us know if you can in advance how much you'd like, so we can make sure you reserve that.
Great, thank you. So Luke is, Luke and I are both double teaming this, so he'll come up in a moment. Oh, great, thank you. That's mine, is that correct? That, okay, great. Good evening. My name is Susan Steinberg. I'm from Howard Robinson and Associates. I'm representing the owner of 24515 Vantage Point Terrace. I'm joined tonight by Luke Tar, and we're both going to be available to answer questions after my presentation. Let's see. I think Renika did a thorough job explaining the project in both her November 18 staff report and then the staff report for this meeting. So it's going to take maybe five minutes to just go over a couple things. As she stated, it is a single, one-story, single-family home, attached garage, swimming pool, and roof deck. The proposed home is fully compliant with all development standards of the local coastal program and the Malibu Country Estates zoning. We're not asking for any variances or modifications, and as you noted, staff is recommending approval. It worked. Here's our site right there, and I have a pointer. There's our site right there. And it is, neighborhood is fully built out, as Renika noted, and this is the last remaining vacant parcel. The previous, most recent development in the neighborhood was the neighbor next door at 24523 Vantage Point Terrace, right there. The project, that project also required a CDP and SPR and was similar, although slightly larger than our project, and that was approved in 2014. Now also, I'd like to just point out that you can see, noting the pattern of development, the pools, where all the pools are, just at the very edge, and that is on the downward grade, sort of where ours will be as well. Oh, and down here, this is the parking lot from, at Pepperdine, that I think Renika mentioned, and John Tyler Drive. Okay, my slide is not working. Oh, thank you. So as you can see, here's the front of the project site. The home on the left is slightly large, higher than our subject site, approximately six feet higher per the survey and our proposed plans. So the Malibu Country Estates, as you know, was a subdivision designed and graded to preserve the views of the homeowners. City staff conducted a site visit and concluded that from the adjoining patio on the ground floor of 24523, no scenic impressive views of the Pacific Ocean or Santa Monica Mountains exists. Could I have the next slide, please? Thank you. So as you can see by our site plan, we're providing greater-than-required setbacks on all four sides. The front yard has a 36-foot, 2-inch setback in lieu of 26-foot minimum requirement. The rear yard is 63 feet, and there's nine feet in lieu of five on both the north and the southern sides. Further, I'd just like to point out that due to the unusual shape of the home, the setbacks actually jump to about 12 feet and greater. This is where it's at the minimum, this is where it's at, sorry, nine feet, and nine feet, but here it's actually 12 feet, and here it's even more on those sides. So those larger, the, both of the setbacks are duplicated on both sides. Next slide, please. I think it was in my discussions with Commissioner Leonard, who asked how much of the house was at the maximum 18 feet in height. So we could get maybe a more exact number from Luke, but I think the elevations and sections here should give you a good view of the varied roof lines. The house has several different angles, as you can see right here. And in the front example here, it's about 14 feet in height. This red line you see on the bottom, right here, you see that, where is that, right there, is the 18-foot mark. As you note, that only one small portion actually even gets up to the 18-foot mark. Most of the house varies from 14 to 16 feet in height. Next slide. So here is the original rooftop deck. This was, let's see, 928 square feet when we measured it, with the exterior staircase right over here. The neighbor had expressed concerns about the proximity of the deck and the stairs, so prior to this hearing, the applicant decided to revise the deck. Next slide, please. And it was shifted to the center of the house, and the staircase was moved to this inner courtyard right here. This ultimately reduced the size of the deck to 887 square feet, and then the planters were also added. This was done to alleviate the concerns that the neighbor had, and putting the roof deck more than 24 feet away from the property line with a rooftop in between. Also, remember, our property is lower in elevation, approximately six feet, so he should have no concerns about privacy from our project. So I think that was all I wanted to say, but Luke and I are available to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke, you have something, Luke? No? Just wait, okay. So they've got nine minutes and 37 seconds remaining for rebuttal. And then we have one speaker card from Stephen Weaver. And you'll have three minutes.
Okay, could you please turn on that microphone again? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Weaver here on behalf of the owner to the north, that, the 22523, Dr. Alistair Saegi. So we actually do really appreciate the reposition of the roof deck. I had invited them to reach out to me through staff, and no one did, but they, that is a major concern that they alleviated. We actually want to support the project. We just had a couple conditions, and we would have told them about this, of course. So there is a condition that was recommended by staff that there be planters on our side to give some, some privacy, because of course, our roof deck is, it's tiny, you just kind of go up there and you're, you know, you can't do anything. You can go up there and stargaze, but you can't really sit around there. So the planters were conditioned with a max height of 18 feet in staff review, but no minimum height. So they could be two feet tall or something like that. So I would just suggest that we have a green wall, could be a faux-green wall in lieu of those planters, but in the same location with a minimum height of eight feet. And there, boom, we wouldn't be able to see right down to our place. Beyond that, you know, there is some privacy concerns because of the proximity to, of their dining room on the north side of the project, right to our bedroom and our living room, they're right there, they're all glass windows. It would be nice if they could add an additional two feet to that setback on the north side. Again, that would be, I think, for the benefit of everyone. If they could, of course, you know, we do think, you know, there is a looming effect created, but we understand with the planters, there's going to be some. If they could reduce the height of that roof deck portion by two feet, again, we want, we want to be happy with the project. And, you know, that's really all we came to say. It's a discretionary application, you guys can attach conditions to it, and we think we're fairly reasonable here. And our, our project was in ESHA when we built it. There's a stream, and now the stream's gone. So we went through a thorough review on ESHA standards that they're not going through, but hey, we can, we can live with some things. We understand they want to build a property, they want it to be profitable for the people that are going to buy it, we understand. Can I reserve the remaining 45 seconds of my time? No?
No, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Well, in that case, again, we would just really encourage you to adopt just those three minor conditions, and then we can support the project.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. All right. You guys have nine minutes and 37 seconds for rebuttal.
I just wanted to point out a couple things. I think we would have no objection with limiting the height of the plants on the roof if you wanted to add that condition. Maybe some clarification, we don't have a dining room on that side, but, so I'm not sure if that comment would be helpful. And then I just wanted to point out the sections, again, that what Sue already pointed out, that we already have a great variety of heights in our, in our roof lines, and so I don't really think we can go less and start becoming uncomfortably low. But if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Tar. Do we have any, I have no other speaker slips, do we have any Zoom callers?
There are no virtual speakers.
There are no, no virtual speakers. All right. With that then, let's close the public hearing and bring it back up to the table. John?
Yeah, Renika, talking about these heights, it seems to me like adding a wall, it takes it over 18 feet. So is there, I assume the deck counts the 42 inches, and you don't have room to raise planters above that?
That is correct. That's why the condition limits any permanent or temporary furniture or planters up to 18 feet in height, and that's per the code for this overlay district.
Okay.
And if I understood on that point, they're, they were asking for, I don't know how you do this, but a minimum height for the plants. So that, Skylar?
Hi, Ms. Brooks. Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you mind pulling up the slide that has the roof deck?
Yes.
Is this on the same question?
It's about the roof deck, yeah, so we could just look at it.
About the plants?
About the plants and height, yes.
Okay, because John, John was like, ready to go, but...
Well, no, I was going to say, if we look at the elevation, that might be more helpful for all of us.
Excellent. Plant height, and then back to John.
Well, I, so the first question on that, while that's getting up, is, I know, I understand the concerns that Mr. Weaver brought, but I think that we have to really deal with this within the code, and I don't think it would be good practice for us to go and be putting an eight-foot-tall hedge on top of a roof deck where we're limited to 18 feet. And that's just sort of a, a general comment, like, I think that we all very much heard the concern of the neighbor about that, but our code doesn't really allow us to do that. So...
Yeah. And that's shown in this slide.
Yeah, that's why...
Okay. My second question on the roof deck, and that's basically the end of it, is normally in other areas when we put in roof decks, we've made, we had a provision in that they have to comply with the dark sky ordinance as far as lighting has to turn off, I think it's 10 minutes with light sensors after nobody's on the deck. Is that included in this?
Compliance with the dark sky ordinance is a condition. I don't know if we added any additional language regarding to...
Well, the reason I bring this up is that the dark sky ordinance has a condition for patios being lit at night, and they never said patios and roof decks. And they're basically the same thing.
If, if I can address that? I believe that in here, it has to be compliant with the dark sky lighting, so that would mean that any lighting on that deck has to be downward facing. I don't think that there's a reason to put any sort of additional condition on it, because the project in its entirety has to be compliant with that. The only condition that I could see you wanting to add is saying that the exterior lighting has to be compliant with the code, and what the code says is that the exterior lighting can only really be on in that area if people are occupying it.
Right, but it doesn't say roof deck, it says patio. And that's why I want to include in the language, and I am going to make a motion to approve this project with the addition of adding the, and we've done this on many decks before, roof decks, that it must follow the same dark sky rules for patios and outside seating, that there's a, a time limit where the light sensor turns the lights off. That's my motion.
Okay, I'm going to second your motion for discussion, and what I would ask staff to do is to just clarify that language. I think that, do you have enough direction from John on how to do that?
Yes.
Or do you need more direction? Because I could help you with it.
So again, so there's already a condition for motion sensor lighting.
So let's just...
Is that for the roof, though?
That's for everything.
Yeah, for this.
All exterior lighting.
The whole house. Yeah. Including the roof.
It's redundant.
It's, it's a redundancy in the code, and I don't think it's, John, I don't necessarily think it's necessary, but what I would ask Renika, if she thinks that there's anything else that we need to clarify on that, that specifically for the roof deck, maybe you add something that says, "Any roof deck lighting shall only be used if the area is being occupied."
Okay, I'd be happy to add another condition, maybe add a new condition number 23 in the lighting section that says the roof deck can only be illuminated when it's in use or something to that effect. Does that address the issue?
I'll accept that amendment. We have used that language before on several houses in this, in the Broad Beach area.
One more comment. Could I invite the applicant up real quick?
You may.
Thank you.
Come together.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand what we're talking about with the lighting and that. Lighting in Malibu is very sensitive. Believe it or not, even Pepperdine has gone through a great deal to trying to get their lighting to be more compliant and sensitive to the value that our community has looking at the stars at night and the wildlife that occupy it. So I just want to make sure you guys understand that, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask for a roll call, or do we have more comments?
I have a lot of comments.
Oh, boy, let's get going.
You know me, you know me. Okay, you guys can sit down. Thank you. Do we have any evidence of precedent in the neighborhood of such a large deck? I looked at the 10 closest houses and saw no other decks. This deck would be over three times as large as the neighbor's deck, and we have in the past drawn a real distinction. The, the deck is, you know, you correctly mentioned that there are privacy concerns that feed into that, and that there's a real distinction contextually between a little hangout spot where a couple people could have a glass of wine or whatever versus a party deck, that you could have a big, loud, noisy party. This feels like a party deck to me, in terms of the scale. So I'm just wondering, do we have any precedent for other large decks in, in that whole neighborhood?
I just wanted to invite the applicant back up.
Well, hang on, hang on.
No, I have a question for the applicant about the, they have a letter in here that says the plans...
I'm asking staff, and then you can, then you can ask that.
The plans are approved by the Malibu Country Estates Architectural Review Board, which means that they reviewed it, and they have an architectural review board for where these houses are. So we can ask staff as many questions as we want, but the neighborhood came forth and said this is okay. I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah. As, yeah, as a part of our process, that's, anyway, go ahead.
So I did look at the aerial photos to see if there was, were any additional roof decks, and there were a couple, one of which was on the larger side. I didn't measure it on GIS, but I did see that there were, this is not the only home in the area that has a larger roof deck. But if we're comparing sizes already, I didn't do any calculations. But if we're comparing sizes or anything, I didn't do any calculations or rough sketches or anything.
Okay, well, that's helpful then. Question of law for, maybe this is Kellen, maybe staff, maybe Maureen, on the primary, primary view determinations, we say clearly, that's not relevant when it's up to 18 feet. You get, you get the, that doesn't matter. But is it relevant when we have a site plan review that we need to look at the character of it, that it's not about the height, but maybe about the location of the project on the parcel? And if they had moved it, you know, a few feet in a certain direction, is that, do we have that discretion or is that the PVD only, it doesn't matter? If it's 18 feet, it doesn't matter where it is on the parcel?
Did you want to answer that? You want me to answer it? So the site, well, I want to make sure I understand. So the, the site plan review that's associated with this project is for remedial grading?
Sure, but that opens the door to neighborhood character, all kinds of subjective analysis.
Well, the findings are specific to the reason why the site plan review was being requested, right? And so we're making the findings that are specific to remedial grading, not for height above 18 feet or...
Right.
Construction on steep slopes or reduction in setbacks. We're, it's specific to remedial grading.
Okay, so if the, I mean, just devil's advocate, if the grading were better to move the house 10 feet in one direction, you would say that would be covered?
I mean, if it were to abate a geotechnical issue, but that's not what we're dealing with here.
Okay. All right, so I don't know that I completely got that answered, but I can, 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 can sense the wind here.
Yeah, I was going to say, the neighborhood character on a project like this is a way to try to find, a way to, yes, not a way to try to find a way to now.
No, I know, but I'm, you know, just talking about, I want to be clear that we're really touching the bases, ticking the boxes. Because this, on the view, it sort of troubled me that they said there is no view, but actually it is a seasonal view, that you can see the ocean when the deciduous tree is gone, or when the leaves are gone. And we have had a case on Doom Drive where, where we expressly had a similar sort of view blockage by foliage and said, "No, no, it is a view. It doesn't matter if there's leaves there, sometimes, sometimes not, it still counts."
May I, may I say something?
Please.
Okay. So what I want to say is, I hear what you're saying, Craig, and I respect that. I mean, it's important that we touch and we feel all aspects of the project, and I know that you have, and I think we all have. I know that this particular project, when they go around and they're moving their stairway, they're reducing their roof deck to accommodate their neighbor, I mean, they didn't have to, because they were completely compliant without any variances, without any waivers, still compliant. But they did it out of courtesy, and I think we have to respect that. There are no issues with this project. I hear that the neighbor would like more, but, you know, they really went out of their way. Because when you're redoing plans like that and you're putting it all back together, it's time consuming and it's expensive and it's pure courtesy. So I appreciate that you guys did that, and I don't hear the neighbor, you know, complaining about a view at this point.
As do I. I totally respect it. I do find that there are other things that we need to check here. Moving on, on the steep slope side, there's a four-foot walk-around. The pole is four feet from the slope. Fire department wants five. And in this overlay, 8B in the overlay specifies, "No grading shall be permitted for the purpose of extending the existing building pad," which I think is what would have to happen to get the five-foot walk-around there. Have you verified that that's, that, they've got the five feet there already? That, that might be a question for, in fact, yeah, Luke, you could, you could help clarify.
We have fire department approval. It's, the path goes around both and they meet in the, so they act, they can access all sides of the house. They go around from both sides.
Well, okay, now I have, that's a separate issue. I'm talking about the width of the path. You've got four feet flat and then the slope. So, hang on, let's, let's, is, is that not true? The story pole is four foot, four feet from the edge of the slope.
Because fire department approved the access.
Okay, so, all right. Now, so I have a question then on the, I'm sorry, on following on the access. My understanding of the walk-around is that the fire department literally has to be able to walk around, that it doesn't matter they could access it, access it from one side or the other.
You just have an applicant that said that the fire department approved the plans.
Hang on, hang on.
So how can we get into that? I don't understand it.
John?
Okay, we had a situation last year where we used a method of calculating the slope and it was incorrect, in fact, because the fire department walk-around was four feet down the side of the hill, okay? And we had the, the applicant, Doug Burge, we had the surveyor, and we had the person who appealed it, all come up and said they agreed it was wrong and they had to, the guy had to move back nine feet, spend another year, another, another application, and it cost them $150,000. So have we done anything? I am sure, and I, I'm not sure I'm 99% sure, that in this case, we probably used the incorrect method of calculating slope, the edge of slope, and again, we, we had a fire department turn around that's not five feet. Has, has the city done anything about correcting the method of that calculation? And was it done on 20-foot or 10-foot intervals?
Renika?
It's my understanding that it was done at five-foot contours, which is the standard for city applications. And I did discuss the extension of the building pad with the city's geotechnical reviewers, and they confirmed that the building pad would not be extended by the proposed grading.
Okay.
The second question is, does the fire department approve the plans or do they go out and measure it? Because the plans would show five feet if we were using the five-foot average slope. But when you go out and observe it, it's not.
So there is a fire department approved access for the project?
My question was, did they actually inspect it or are they believing our plans?
I don't think they went to the site. I think they...
Okay, then how would they know?
I'm sorry?
How would they know that it was only four feet?
How would they know that it was four feet?
Yeah, instead of five, since the plan showed five.
The fire department has discretion...
Yeah, but they have to know...
In applying their standards. So these are reviewed and stamped by the fire department.
If you get a plan, if you get a plan with a five-foot width shown on it and it's really only four feet, that's not discretion.
Let me, John, let me point out maybe a more distinct issue about the walk-around that, that, that might be more helpful to focus. This is, on the north side, the story poles are adjacent, I'm sorry, let me go ahead.
Chair, if I could ask, we just had a commissioner step out of the meeting. If we could maybe take a two-minute recess until he rejoins for the question?
We still have a quorum and he was happy to, no?
No, if he's going to be voting, he has to hear the whole thing.
Okay. In that case, we'll take a two-minute recess or 7:37, make it 7:40.
I would request commissioners to ask permission to leave in the future.
And don't discuss this item with anyone, please.
We're still waiting for our planner.
Chair Hill, do you have questions that you wish to...
She's in the room. Meeting can resume. There we go. Meeting is resuming. Maybe more distinct than this, is it four feet or five feet? We could, how long is a piece of string? But on the fire, on the walk-around, on the north slope, the story poles are immediately adjacent to the slope. So two questions about that. One, can the fire department walk-around be a slope surface? I thought it needed to be reasonably flat, not, not this steep. And two, is there not a setback required from an ascending slope? I know normally there is, maybe in this overlay there isn't? Or how, how does that work?
There is a setback, but it's a one-to-one slope.
But not, not any less than that? And so, and the fire department is happy with a walk-around on, on a slope?
I don't believe the five-foot walk-around is at the slope. I'm looking for the access plan. Just give me one moment.
Maybe Skylar, you could answer. You're looking at the walk-around right now.
Well, I'm just looking at the plan that's stamped by the fire department that says what they plan to do is okay. And I'm generally pretty good with that. It's Slide A or Plan Set A dash 0.2. So I don't know if we have that available to put up on the screen, Renika. I don't know if that, if you have that slide in there. I don't know if you do. But it clearly shows to me the marked line of where the fire department access is. So I'm okay with that. I don't have an issue with that.
They're okay on the slope. Okay. Part, part of our job here is to double-check these things and make sure they're...
If you look at the contour lines on this, those contour lines meet the standard of the fire department and that's why they approved it.
Okay.
I was going to say...
That's very black and white to me.
This is not even for us to review. We're basically here to do the planning portion of it, not to review it.
The fire department's job is for the fire department to do their job. And I think they do...
I'm sorry, my, my question although was also, is there not a setback from a slope? She answered that question, so we can move on.
Comment.
John?
It is our job to review. My next-door neighbor cost him 150 grand in a year because we screwed up, because a prior commissioner said, "Whatever a licensed contractor stamps is okay." Okay, and it wasn't okay. And it wasn't okay with the coastal commission.
The difference here, though, is this is a fire official versus a private contractor.
Fire official who has never been to the property and gets a, a plot plan that is averaged to show it flat when it isn't.
May I?
Signing something he doesn't know.
May I?
Who was first? Elizabeth?
Okay. So I just want to say, I appreciate what John is saying and that may or may not be the case, but if, the fire department will come out. They will come out before they give a certificate of occupancy. And if, if the plans were not reflected of the actual site and there's a problem, it's not, it's not on us to police the fire department. And so if you're, in your case, if your neighbor, if their contractor did not actually prepare plans that accurately represented the property and that happened, you know, that's, that's on your neighbor and the relationship with their contractor and the site survey.
No, that wasn't the case, because of the method they used, which was...
Let's, let's focus on the case at, case at hand, please.
Agreed, showed a flat piece of property that wasn't flat because of average...
Commissioner, can we focus on the case at hand, please?
Yeah. Skylar?
I'd just like to reiterate, I'd like to have a roll call.
Any other comments? Anybody? No? Okay. I'm, I'm concerned about the size of the roof deck. That, that's a deal breaker to me, but let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now, that means we are on to Item 8A. To reorder the agenda. Rebecca, do you want to introduce that or shall I just read it? It's 8A, Planning Commission Rules of Decorum, of Procedure and Decorum. Recommended action, consider an amendment to the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure and Decorum. Planning Commission Resolution Number 2361. To reorder the agenda, place in commissioner and staff comments and inquiries at the end of the agenda under Item Number 8, Planning Commission Items, and provide directions to staff to return with a resolution reflecting any changes adopted and rescinding, Resolution Number 2361. I have no speaker slips here on it. I see, I see one potential speaker in the audience. No, two, I see two. Anybody? Do we have any Zoomers?
There's no raised hands.
Okay. Yes, John?
Okay, I'm adamantly opposed to this.
Oh, okay, so we're, we're opening the commissioner comments.
Right. And the reason is, two people, okay? We had a meeting here with a couple hundred people. When the meeting closed, we had eight last meeting, eight people. And we are quite a bit different. I understand why the city council considered this and turned it down and made the meetings start earlier to alleviate that problem. And they, they reordered their system by adding hours. We, we are not like the city council. We do not make, we don't report on, "I went to this meeting and I, I had drinks with so-and-so and blah, and blah, and blah." That's not part of our thing. And we don't go on for 45 minutes like the city council does. It's, and to take, for example, last meeting, we had, what, an hour and a half, two hours of comments? And then we're going to wait five hours for us to reply? We are, we are only allowed to, to talk about general limited comments, as we were told earlier in this meeting. And, and the, the audience is only allowed to talk about things that weren't on the agenda. So I have never been in a super-long public comment, and I've been on, I think, for 17, 18 years, a super-long public comment by the planning commission. Now, in the case of the meeting we had the other day, it would have been helpful if the audience knew the rules of the road. Obviously, that's what we spent our comments on this morning, this half-evening. The audience didn't know the rules of the road. We can't tell them if we're telling them at 1:30 in the morning. And it does no good to come here, in my opinion, and make comments as, as public and then wait five hours or three hours or whatever to get a reply.
Okay.
And so I don't, I don't see any reason to do this if we wanted, if we want to shorten the time that the consultants are here or something like that, let's start at 6:15 or something and tell them not to come until 6:30, whatever. But this is, this is taking away a, the ability of the planning commission to set the tone of the meeting and to announce things like, "Hey, there's a meeting tomorrow night, you ought to go to it." What are we going to do? Tell it to two people, you know, three hours later?
John, I'll, I'll have some more sympathetic comments, I think, but let's hear from Elizabeth. She proposed this.
So I, I want to say, John, that I heard you when I agendized this. I want to say, John, that I heard you when I agendized this, and I agree with you. I agree with you. If the public is here and they are commenting, they have a right for us to be able to respond. However, the reason that I agendized this is because I've been in that stakeholder position, constituent position, and had things on the agenda that were really important. And what would happen over and over again is that the commissioners would go on tangents and speak about things that were not applicable to what was going on. And we had attorneys, we had consultants, we had people, you know, up until 4:00 AM on the East Coast. And there was a real, it felt to me, when we were in need as a family trying to do something, that nobody was respectful of what we came here to do. And we didn't come here to listen to the commissioners go on and on and on and on and on and on and on to the point where our meeting, or our agendized item, got pushed, not once, not twice, not three times. And I don't think any of our residents want to have that happen to them. So I agree that we give our residents a certain amount of time to talk. And I think that it is prudent for us, as the appointed commissioners, to be able to collect our thoughts, to be able to respond in a limited amount of time. And I think three minutes is what we give them, and each of us should take three minutes to respond, however we want. And then we move on.
Can I say, I agree with John that this isn't the solution. I agree with you that there's a problem. And I think the solution is maybe something like that, that we just need to be more prudent about not letting the comments go. Let me just say my piece. John, you might not have to reply to this, but the staff report said the point of this was to better preserve the time and financial resources of owners and applicant teams. Our constituents are the public, the general public, the community. That's who we have to be, and the public interest. And that's who we have to be answerable to first. One difference is the applicants who have, whose path has brought them to the commission are here because they didn't do a clean sheets project. And so the notion of having consultants and having them show up is kind of baked into the cake. That's something they have to do. Whereas, the public is showing up here on their own time, their own dime, and I think we owe them... They're not getting paid to sit here like the experts are. So I think to prioritize the applicants before the community members, which is effectively what we'd be asking here, is expressly contrary to the mission statement and the vision statement and balancing these interests. So I think you're right. The problem is, we just need to curtail the long-winded comments, but not by doing it this way. John?
Yeah, I agree.
I just want to be clear.
I was called on.
I just want to understand what you said, though. Because what I'm saying is not move it to the end of the meeting.
Well, that's what the proposal is here.
Right. And I'm going a different route. I agree with you. I think that we should have a limited, you know, respectful amount of time to get our thoughts across, just like the public has a limited amount of time to get their thoughts across.
Okay, John?
Yeah, and I agree. I do not think, there are certain things that come up, like a fire, where you have to take a little bit longer to explain things. I don't think it should be a limited metered time. I think it's incumbent upon the chairman to limit...
Okay, thank you, John. That's enough.
No, I'm not done. Any chairman in the future. And then I think the other thing that is sort of counter to the problem of having to come back and back and back again is, once you've been here once, you're number one at the next meeting. You're 4A or 4B. You're not a five. So part of the problem we've had is tonight, okay? It's 7:55, a lot of blabbing being done, and there's two people left, and it's over. And then other nights, we're continuing items at 10:30, two or three items. And a lot of it has to do with...
Scheduling.
Scheduling, period scheduling. Or calling extra meetings and not having super-long meetings.
I want to hear from Drew and then from Kellen.
I like the way this is going. I think that we should maybe modify this to have Commissioner comments be limited to three minutes.
Kellen?
So my recommendation was someone should make a recommendation, and I can hope you craft it of what you're thinking. But for the legal purposes, one, most cities do their Commissioner comments at the end. And what those really mean are things that are of value to you. If you wanted to speak to the lady and talk about her kids and being a mama bear, that would be at the end. But if there's public comments that you wanted to respond to, you're legally allowed to have a brief response to those, brief. But what we're talking about is kind of the broader talk about things that aren't necessarily before us. So, you know, meetings I went to and that type of thing.
So, go ahead, Skylar. I'm sorry.
Kellen, would it be smart for us to separate and have sort of two comment sessions? And one of those comment sessions would be very brief, addressing any things that was in front of us. And then there would be a comment session at the end of the meeting that is sort of a, here are your general public comments. That seems to me, which would be potentially more intelligent, and I don't want us to go down a crazy rabbit hole. Like, in the beginning of a meeting, the Commissioner comments are limited to two minutes.
So your thought process is correct. I wouldn't phrase it as two comments.
Okay.
You're legally allowed to respond to the, in the public comment section, you're allowed to respond very briefly. So you don't need to create a new term or section for that. So if public comes up and they say things like, "I'm confused about XYZ," someone here could say, "I agree with you. I'm also confused. I would like staff to come back with an item for that. Can we do that?" That is fine. You can do that. It's when it starts going on, four minutes, five minutes.
What I would do is make a recommendation that we, do we all agree that those first comments, do we want to... I don't think that we need to limit the time on them.
I think we need to limit the time on them.
I would be very, very opposed to limiting that.
I feel like we just need like a subjective structure on ourselves, but that, to put a specific time... John's right. There may be meetings where we need to talk.
Hold on.
And then we talk about it at the end.
If we're addressing things for the public, let's go back to our city attorney here and listen to what he has to say. The direction that we're being given is very direct on how we're supposed to respond to those things that are brought before us that evening. So I would be in favor of limiting our response to that and then having our public comments be at the end of the meeting. And if you guys want to ramble here till the wee hours of the morning, that's our problem. That's not imposing thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars at every meeting for all of these people that are coming here that have business to do.
What about the comment that's, I'm sorry, hang on. There's a council meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock. There's a... These quick announcements. You want to do those when people are here.
Those announcements should be coming from staff. So when we go to our planning director, right? Our planning director is the person that should be giving those announcements.
Or tonight, when I said, "Hey, I got my 72-hour notice on the debris clearance." That's not something staff gives, but that's something that people might want to...
That would be at your general comments at the end of the meeting.
That's your choice, Craig, if you want to put that in your time and you want to say that. You get three minutes, and you can say whatever you want.
Skylar, are you yielding? Did you make your point?
I'm not yielding because I get interrupted, but I would like us to come up with a motion and be constructive about it. But we should definitely hear from all of us. We've already spent a lot of time on this, and I don't want to spend more than 10 minutes.
Hang on. John next.
Okay, again, we're a commission. We are advised by an attorney. Okay, go ahead.
I just want to make the suggestion, John, that if we can...
Did I yield my turn?
Let John finish. Let John finish.
I think we can get there.
We go back and forth. Let John finish.
No, we can get there by saying, hey, we're gonna agree that we're gonna go two minutes. If we want longer time, right? We can make that, if we have to deal with something like we dealt with the other evening, right? Or something that's like, we're dealing with a major disaster, we can agree at the beginning of that time that we want to extend our comment time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right? Like, we have the wherewithal to do that.
If we need to. You're proposing a nominal three minutes.
Yes, legally, you can. If you set a time limit, let's say it's three minutes per person tonight, and there's something big that comes up, someone can make a motion and say, "I would like to amend that rule for this meeting only to allow people to have five minutes."
Okay.
Or whatever.
We're a commission. Our chairman runs the meeting. We have a procedure. We have an advisor in the city attorney. We have staff to give us information, okay? So we should be able to have a chairman who can run a meeting and not let people blab. Right now is a perfect example. I had to go like this and this and this to talk, okay? Because you didn't call on people. Now, and people didn't yield time. If we want to do it correctly and make it limited, have a set of procedures. But to say, everybody gets two minutes, okay, or three minutes, or whatever. You're gonna sit like this, and somebody takes four. What are you gonna do? Give everybody another minute? You're going way beyond the balance.
Drew?
You have to run a meeting. The Speaker of the House doesn't say, "You can only speak a minute."
Point is made. Drew wanted to speak next.
I think we have a good template here. I just wanted to point out that a lot of the things that you guys are talking about here, we have to maintain the planning director, we have to maintain the city attorney, Rebecca. We have a lot of people that are gonna be sitting here, listening to us go on about just our feelings about stuff at the end of the meeting, and that needs to be taken into consideration also. But, you know, I think that the three of us, there's five of us here, three minutes each, 15 minutes of comment. That's sucking up quite a bit of the meeting. The people, the public gets three minutes. You know, I think that it's a good start for us at three minutes, and we can amend it if we need to.
I just feel like we just need to be cognizant that we should be brief, and we don't need a special rule for it.
I just want to say that we've tried that for many, many, many years. And whether it's, you know, Craig is chair, or John is chair, or whomever is chair, I've watched these meetings for a long time, and it just hasn't worked.
I've watched us run the clock to 10:30, and I think that's completely wrong.
Okay, Skylar?
I'm gonna make a motion that we impose a three-minute response time, is my wording. I'll let Kellen craft that in the initial part of the public comment section. And that we be very clear that those comments are addressing any concerns that have been brought forth by the public. And then later on, we can have some more general public comments at the end of the meeting. And that the time limit is three minutes for each one of us, unless there's an agreement by all of us that we amend that at the beginning of that meeting to respond for the longer amount of time.
I'll second it.
I have a question. Somebody talks three and a half minutes. Are you gonna kick them out?
There's a rule at the decorum.
Are you gonna kick them out of the meeting?
The chair already has that power.
Okay.
Don't get kicked out, John.
No, no. And the point is, there's one guy with three minutes, but he's got five to talk. So that's it. It's five-minute comment period. It's per person.
Concise.
I can always yield my three to you if you really need it.
Oh, if that's an option.
Yeah, there we go.
If that's, maybe you want to, I'd be more in favor if you want to write...
I am always, I'm gonna vote against this. I am against limiting information to the public, period.
Hold on, hold on. I want to be very clear on the intention of this. The intention of this is for us to be direct and run an efficient meeting. And we need to do that and impose that on ourselves, not only for us, but to set a better example for the public. And that's the intention. And guess what? If we try it for five meetings and it doesn't work, we can change it.
Okay, so what happens, for example, tonight?
You lost your bet.
You spent, I said 8:30, but...
You said 8:30, but you don't have two little kids at home.
Okay, but what I'm wondering is, the lady, we spent most of the discussion this morning about the lady at the last meeting feeling picked on, okay? Now, is that in the three-minute thing, or is that at the end of the meeting?
It's your choice. Whatever you want to talk about is three minutes.
No, that's different than what...
We can have a little banter about this, but the point of that was, somebody came and made a public comment about something that we were all aware about from the last meeting. And we addressed that public comment in what I thought was a decent matter and an efficient matter at the beginning of the meeting.
So is it up to the chairman to make that call?
Chair, I need to clarify some legal things here. So, public comment, you are only allowed to respond to very briefly things that you've heard. And very, so you're not going to be speaking at that time more than three minutes anyway, because I'm going to cut you off under the Brown Act. So that's just to kind of curtail and keep things moving forward, so...
Which is why I don't feel like we necessarily need a rule.
Well, here's what I've written for the motion, is Commissioner comments during the public comment period shall be limited to three minutes per Commissioner, subject to the Brown Act. Because even if you think you can talk for three minutes about, I don't know, Nancy Pelosi, I'm going to say that is a Brown Act violation. So you will have the three minutes, but it still needs to stay within the public comment and the purview of the commission and all the rules that I harp on all the time.
Okay. And then I just want to ask, that's great, if somebody feels the need, like this is, I really do, there's something I want to talk about with the commission, then at the end of the meeting, we can have general Commissioner comments if we want to do that.
Yes, that is the...
And if the public wants to stay, John, they can. Stay till the very end to hear you.
And a question to the city attorney. If this is the Brown Act, which is a state law, it must, it also applies to city council, doesn't it? As a Brown Act body.
These are issues that are only for the planning commission, so how they choose...
No, no, no. I'm talking about what you get to talk about.
Yes.
That's a Brown Act body violation.
I'm not talking about any violations. The rules that I set forth apply to all commissions, all bodies, so...
So, okay, so if we have this, I don't know how you label this after thing in the agenda, but if we have it, if somebody said, for example, "I want to have a conversation about how we interpret roof decks," or something that's within our scope, and four of the people say, "Yeah, no, I want to go home. We did our agenda. I want to go home." What, how do we have that conversation?
You're not having a conversation because it's not an agendized topic. Those are your Commissioner comments. So just like you said, you got your notice.
So there's kind of pointless to put anything at the end.
I want to make a...
That's a policy question.
Listen, most of the people who are watching this the next day on YouTube, you could go on Nextdoor and say, "Hey, I had something important to say. Cue it up at 2:46 minutes," and you could get it out there.
Not, for example, the case tomorrow. You're not gonna get...
Listen, the point of Commissioner comments after the public speaks is what John said. It's for the commissioners to briefly respond to something, to the public, to what they've brought to us.
We're all there.
We're all there. And then if there's something you want to say in your three minutes, you know, like me, you want to agendize something for the next meeting, there's something important you want to bring up, you need to do that efficiently within your three minutes, and that's it.
Yeah, but...
Is the proposal to put a meeting, a time at the end of every meeting, or is it not? What do you, Skylar made the motion.
So I want to clarify, and I'm gonna defer again to our city attorney here, but I think it's in our best interest to make our brief comments at the beginning of the meeting, limit ourselves to three minutes, addressing anything that's brought forth by the public. And at the end of the meeting, we can have our more general public comment thing, where if there's something we want to agendize, we discuss it. I think sometimes when we're in a hearing and we're talking, and something comes up on an item, we can talk, say, roof decks for tonight, right? That might be something that we would bring back later at the end of the meeting, and we would say, hey, you know, we dealt with this earlier. It's been an ongoing thing, and we need to, we may want to bring an item back to discuss that. If we have consensus to do that, we do it. It's not like the city council where...
Closing comments. Okay, hang on.
Again, again, my thing is, why three minutes? Where'd you come up with that? And, no, and that's what the audience gets. Maybe, and my point is that the chairman ought to determine whether, number one, and the chairman and the city attorney, whether it's an appropriate comment to the public. And the chairman ought to determine if it's brief enough and...
the chairman ought to determine if it's brief enough and within the time, and not have a time limit because, for example.
John, I agree with you, and you're making the same point again.
No, I'm not.
Tell us something new.
Okay, here's something new. Skylar says, "Well, if we want to agendize something, we've got to do it at the end." Okay? That's what he just said.
That's what he, I wasn't going to agree with that.
Okay, so, through the council, through the Planning Commission, decide they don't want Skylar ever to agendize anything. Wait, 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 let me, please finish.
Commissioner Mazza, no, we have rules of decorum, please do not raise your voice at people like that. That is not acceptable under the rules of decorum.
It's not acceptable not to talk when you are not agenda, when you're not recognized.
My point stands, please.
Okay, now.
Wrap it up, John.
If three of us decide, well, we don't want Skylar ever to agendize anything, so at the end of every meeting, we just stand up and walk out. No quorum, no hearing, no nothing.
That's why it's going to be a good thing.
That's, okay.
We agendize something in our three minutes, John.
You wouldn't have that power, so I would shut that idea down, and hopefully the chair would also say the same thing.
My sense is that whatever the merits of timing or not timing on the first part of the meeting, that the end-of-the-meeting concept here is pretty much a waste. I don't know that we'd really use it well or properly.
But we, but for the sake of the constituents, that's what we need to do, and we need to have really clear boundaries.
Maybe to just be able to say then, okay, we've reached the end of our formal agenda, would anybody like to make a quick comment before we adjourn?
I was going to say, we have a workaround, if we have something important that we need to give ourselves more time, we can agree at the beginning of the meeting to do that. We have a workaround in this plan.
Right, Skylar?
But we don't want to take a vote at the beginning of every meeting, that's another, you know.
So I just, I think that this is one of the things that we often have gotten derailed on in the past. And why don't we try going with a recommendation with the help of our city attorney to have some very direct comments at the beginning of the meeting, just responding to anything that comes up from the public, and at the end of the meeting, we have a more general discussion if it's needed. And if we don't need it at the end of the meeting, we don't have to have it. But right now, it's, we need to improve, and we need to improve our efficiency, and I would like to ask Kellen to explain the reason as to why that would work well.
I think he has, and I think we're ready to call a vote. I don't know, I'm hearing more of the same.
I would recommend calling the vote, but we need to clarify exactly what the vote is. So my understanding is that the recommendation that is before you in the agenda is what you were going with, with some modifications to say that the public comment period in the beginning will have Commissioner comments following that as part of the public comment, limited to three minutes max per Commissioner, subject to the rules of the Brown Act. And then, as the agenda says, there will be a general Commissioner comment section at the end of the agenda where it's been placed in the recommendation. And I just want to note, if you were asked to agendize anything, that obviously is at staff's discretion in terms of time and when it fits into the schedule, but obviously you can always make those votes to.
Only thing I wanted to ask you about, if I would make a change to that, because I would, that's my, that would be my motion, is at the beginning of those, I'm going to call it the first public comments, in the general, in the public comment period, if we were faced with something or something where we were like, okay, we can already tell that we need to respond for a longer amount of time, could we, as a Planning Commission, say, or the chairman could say, "I think that we should make this a five-minute comment period," and we all agree to that? What would be the proper process for doing that?
Yes, so my recommendation is to go with the motion that I just made, and then stepping back from that, you always have the power to amend the agenda. So let's say in the case of the fire rebuild conversation that we had, where you wanted to say, "I don't want to wait till the very end, I want to put my thoughts out early. Hi, I would like to amend the agenda to move the public, the commission comment period forward so that we can respond appropriately." And if you get the votes, you get the.
As opposed to, "Chair, by your leave, may I take five minutes?"
Yeah.
Sorry, you lost me where you're going with this.
Well, if you're putting in the three minutes, if you say, "Chair, by your discretion, may I take five minutes, please, tonight?" You're saying that wouldn't be possible unless we previously amended the agenda in advance of that.
No, he's saying that at the beginning of the meeting, you could make the determination, or no, you're saying that it would have to be done.
I'm asking, could that audible call happen right up to the moment, or do we have to decide in advance?
With the agenda, you can make it before the item is called. So if you haven't gotten to the commission comments, which are in the back, you can move them forward.
Why can't we let the chairman have? Why can't we let the chairman have discretion?
Because it has not worked historically. Historically, it hasn't worked.
And we can fire the chairman, and that brings up another point. The three minutes, does it count interruptions?
I made a, Chair, I made a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah, let's have a roll call.
I hesitate, but could I ask, as a point of clarification, whether you would like to have a time clock running during your comments?
Absolutely.
So you can track that? Okay. Vice Chair, Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Hale?
Absolutely not.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, we have reached the end of the agenda. Does anybody have any comments they'd like to throw in and stick around for? No? Okay, on that note, we adjourn.